Would you call the roll, please?
Robert Kraus. Jason Blair.
Here.
Melissa Hunt.
Here.
Terry Kavner. David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
We have on the docket for the pledge of allegiance, would you please stand, and instead of the pledge allegiance tonight, I'd like to observe a moment of silence, if we could, Item two is the consent docket. Item A is approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held June 15, 2015. Item B is receive the minutes of a special parks board meeting held April 7, 2015. Item C is approve resolution number 82715 establishing the 911 emergency telephone fee rate for calendar year 2016. Item D is approve a residual equity transfer from the general fund to the public safety sales tax fund in the amount of $54,366.92. Item E is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2014-2015 in the amount of $3,999,255.96.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? It's a consent docket, so would you call for the vote, please?
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number three is discuss and consider authorizing staff to enter contract negotiations with Mstat, EMS, Norman Regional Hospital Authority, DBA Norman Regional Health Systems, to provide ambulance services to the city per RFQs number 1415-001 and recommendation of the ambulance review committee. This is from Mayor.
Mayor, you know, we sent out a request for qualifications for interested companies to potentially provide ambulance service for our citizens in the community. We did this probably back in April or so. Received proposals from four companies, IMSA, Mstat, Midwest EMS, and Samaritan EMS. We had a committee then that was put together of council members, citizens, and fire chief, firefighter, and myself, council members Kraus and Hunt, Fire Chief Byrd, Major Kevin Kidd, and then citizens Rob Harris and Preston McCurton. That interviewed the four firms based on the RFQ that was sent out. Did that a couple of weeks ago, and the committee, after those interviews were held, committee is recommending unanimously that the city proceed with contract negotiations with Mstat to eventually, once the details are all worked out, to begin providing ambulance service in our community. So several members of the committee are here. If there's any questions, some folks with Mstat are here as well. If there's any questions.
I think that I have reservations, but part of it is because I don't know the responses to the RFQ that was sent out and so forth. And I was just wondering, you know, something that's as significant as this, whether maybe we couldn't have a state session with the council where we had to go through a matrix or something and help us to have a better understanding as to why Mstat was chosen and so forth.
And we'd certainly have to do that if that's what you all would like to do.
I would certainly feel more comfortable doing that because, you know, I don't, I believe absolutely, and I have absolute confidence in our two council representatives on that and you as well, but I'm the one that when somebody asks me a question, I have to defend it, and I think that would be well for all the council members, is to be able to know what basis this decision was made, on which basis it was made, so that we can talk to citizens about it. And I know it will delay the process some, but I don't think that's of the utmost importance at this time.
Well, I think, I was on the committee, and I don't like that idea. Simply the reason why is that you no longer would have needs for committees, you know? Then everything would need to come up front, and to be honest, I will be happy to answer any questions anybody might have right now. There were four very good, successful companies that we interviewed. Of the four, well, it's kind of interesting, you can tell a lot about a company by who does their presentations and who shows up. And two of them had very fantastic presentations. It was more of a subsidy that we would have to do to use their services. They would charge the city, and then we'd have to charge the citizens on the water rates, everybody, in some cases, to pay for the service. I personally was not in favor of that. Two of the others would charge the individuals that used the service directly, just like we have been doing in the past. I know personally, I felt that that was the better decision to make, because I know a lot of my constituents would be opposed to paying for a service that they may never use, so I thought that was fair. One of the companies that we interviewed, to be honest with you, I didn't think that they actually even wanted the contract. They had one individual show up to make their presentation. They didn't have a presentation. They handed no information out. And the other three companies had several individuals show up, had big elaborate presentations, and did a fantastic job. Samaritan absolutely was impressive with the technology they used for their presentations. It was really interesting. So I think we had four very good companies. To me, Mstat was, hands down, the best company to go with. You know, if you have more questions, and you definitely absolutely want to commit, you know, do this in a different way, you know, I don't think we need to. To me, it was pretty clear that Mstat was the best company. And I'll be honest with you, I was a little hesitant at first when this whole process started, because the last time we went with Midwest City, you know, a lot of us got some emails and some phone calls from people that worked for Norman Regional, and so I was a little hesitant at first about this process, but I was very impressed with their presentation, things they had to say, and the ideas they had, and the involvement they wanted to do here in the city. So to me, it was honestly a very easy decision, and to let you know, and everyone else out there, that's out there, we had citizens from the community, representatives from staff and the council, and every single person individually had the same recommendation. So it's-
There absolutely no subsidies from the city.
That is correct. With Norman Regional, that's correct, there were no subsidies.
That was a question I was going to ask. Who were the two that we were going to sub-
Samaritan and IMSA.
Okay.
And Norman Regional brought their medical director, they're the only ones that brought their medical director, very impressed with him. I acquiesced everything that Robert said. I mean, my scoring sheet was, you know, so-
Last time, one of the concerns that we had was that they, on all their vehicles and so forth, everything had to run through Norman-
State law has taken care of that. By state law, you can and will already do that.
Right.
It's their choice, so it's-
That was also very clear in our RFQ that the requirement would be that the ambulance provider would take the citizen person where they wanted to go unless the facility they wanted to go to was on vert, or it was a critical life-threatening situation. That was a sticking point, you may recall that back those years ago, and we went through this before. Norman's system at that time was different than it is now, and there was that concern, there were the issues about paramedics versus medics, and all of those things. And again, those things that we learned our lessons from the first time through, we put into the request for qualifications. I think we had sent that out to you all to look at, and we went the committee route as we normally do on these kinds of things, but-
I'm just, as in, I don't recall this in the RFQ, or if you guys talked about it, but having ambulances in our community, a minimum, understand there are extreme circumstances where things happen, but just having coverage here, so when somebody does need one, one will be an acceptable response time.
That has been part of the issue with our current provider in terms of failing to meet that, and having some extended wait times and/or having to do mutual aid from other companies. Again, that was addressed in the RFQ, that they needed to provide us the minimum number of ambulances that it was deemed appropriate. In this case, Norman has committed to two at all times, and then they'll have ambulances and a supervisor just to our south and the city limits. They also intend to base those ambulances out of their new facility centrally located in the community, to where their responses to the community can be better.
Now, Robert, you said that you thought one of them didn't really want it to be bad. Was that the one that we have now?
Yes, sir.
I would assume that would be it.
Yes, I was very disappointed with that company's presentation. And I want to say that this has absolutely nothing to do with the care of paramedics from paramedics.
Right.
Because the paramedics never once ever came into discussion about quality of care.
Right.
Now, the discussion about paramedics did come in as to how many paramedics would be on an ambulance. And Mstat has made a comment about trying to do everything they can to maintain two paramedics at all times.
But the contract will only guarantee one.
Right, correct.
So if we enter, do the contract, and everything is approved, in the negotiation process, we would have assurances that they would have something, that they will be covered here. I hate for us to go into this, and then there will be their staff up if those ambulances stay in Norman and just come up here.
I think you should hear from Richie and let him visit with you about those. Richie's blood is the VP for Norman Regional, more medical.
Yes, sir.
Come on up. The city, the committee and the city is satisfied with the responses from Mstat, and we believe absolutely that they will have two here, and that contract will be required to have two at all times.
As well as present, you know, activities that the city does, recharge.
Yeah, no charge.
All kind of things.
If you just have the staff stand by.
Richie, if you'll just give kind of an overview of how you see it in terms of providing the service.
Well, the purpose of our services is highly reliable. It is high commitment to outcomes, and it is a community partnership. So that was the premise of all of our approach to this process. It's similar to our approach to medical facility that we're building on Telephone Road as well, so we're fully committed to a minimum of two ambulance trucks in the community, plus a crew chief. The paramedics, minimum of one, but our goal is to have two paramedics staffing that truck at all times. And if there was a need, or we were out of the community for some reason, we have 18 trucks to the south in the city of Norman that would backfill that service. So we feel very confident about meeting those needs and addressing those needs for our community.
And you had also indicated to the committee, and correct me if I'm wrong, but you intend to purchase two additional vehicles. There won't be two from Norman that'll be moved up here. It'll be two new vehicles for Moore.
Two new vehicles, yes.
You guys also have a topping off ceremony. Want to talk about that while you're standing there?
Sure. On July 16th, we will have a topping out ceremony for reaching the highest point of our new facility, and we're excited to have that opportunity, and it indicates that we did it safely, and we reached the highest point, and you're all invited to be a part of that ceremony as well at 8:30 in the morning. And we'd love to share the news about the new Mstat service and our partnership with you, and being a part of that public safety net the community deserves.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Well, let me ask you this.
Yes, sir.
And you're saying that you're going to bring two vehicles up here.
Yes.
Is there a possibility of identifying them and making them to the Moore facility? Other words, I have a real adverse adversity, or whatever proper word may be, toward being Norman's little sister.
Sure.
And I think there are a lot more people that feel that way. And we would like to feel that this is an ambulance service that has as such priority for Moore.
Absolutely, and that is our priority. Again, it's that high reliability. We'll be here for our residents, for those patients who are in need, and we'll be here at the public events and those private moments. We'll be here nonstop, committed to this community, fully committed to this community, and a stronger community partnership with the leadership with all of you and with our residents in those sporting events, in those special public events. We're here for that purpose. So absolutely, I think I understand your question correctly, and this is Moore's ambulance service.
That's one thing that, I know personally, I was very impressed with, their commitment and their desire to be a part of the community. And they didn't talk, never once did they ever talk about Norman. They talked about Moore and our community, and I was very impressed with that.
Well, just maybe to consider, what are these two new ambulances that we put more on there somewhere? I don't know if that's possible.
But just like you've done on the hospital, you said Norman Regional Moore.
Yes.
Can you do the same thing to the ambulances?
And we are, just a quick note about that, we are required by the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid to have that nomenclature. We had Moore Medical Center before, but we're required by the federal government to identify the licensing entity, which is Norman Regional, and then specify the location, so therefore the name Norman Regional Moore. But we will do that, definitely.
I also think another thing that I was impressed with was their willingness to work with the fire department, and how I think you were going to work the shifts that are similar and all of that, that, and we had some folks from the fire department on the committee, and they were also thought that these guys were the top choice.
Our goal is to be as seamless as possible to the community, and at the same time adhering to our high standards and that high reliability, the partnership that we talked about, and the quality outcomes that we believe is second to none.
And one of the issues, Richie, as we had in the RFQ and talked to you all about, as well as all the providers, is the question that came up earlier about transport to the patient's facility of choice, so you might address that.
Right, and somebody mentioned that it was state requirement. That's absolutely true. We will intervene only in the case that someone is unable to make that decision, life-threatening condition. We'll take them to the nearest facility that can address those needs. Otherwise, it's patient choice, patient preference, always, every time, first time, end of story.
Even if your limit, your staff is stressed, and they're going to have a bad decision to take them out of service for two hours, that would have any impact on if the patient wants to go to the hospital?
It's patient preference, and we've got that, the resources to back that up, to fill those gaps, absolutely.
With all that in mind, I'll make a motion to approve Mstat.
I'll second that.
All right, thank you.
I would like to say one thing. I received an email today that started out by casting reflections on people on the committee, particularly council members, as well as the mayor, and I just want to say, I've served on the council now for 15 years, and I've never seen a single incident where I felt like that there was anything other than total integrity displayed by any of the council members or any of the members of the city staff. And getting emails like that is a much greater turnoff than it is of trying to, it's certainly not going to influence the way I feel, and anybody who sends something like that and then doesn't sign it, it has exactly the opposite effect that they are desiring and so forth. So that was one reason I wanted this edition of information, is because I want to be able to defend their recommendations. And I don't know if anybody else got that email or not, but I just-
I read the emails.
That impacted.
Well, I just found out about the same time you did here. Not the email, but the information from the ambulance part of it.
And I knew that that was pretty much the case, so.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number four is consider adopting resolution number 82615 amending the community development block grant disaster recovery, housing rehabilitation policy and procedures. That's my point.
Mayor and council, items three and four are companion items. City staff recommending change to the community development block grant disaster recovery, housing rehabilitation program. The two changes are to add a formal grievance policy within our policy and procedures, and that will include the ability to mail in a grievance, email a grievance, and then also fill in a grievance process online. And that is a HUD Office of Inspector General request and an internal auditor request that we do that. And the second change to that policy would be to make sure city staff reviews all the applications received for the housing rehab programs, to make sure there is no duplicated services provided for the person receiving the funding. So it strengthens our duplication of benefits policy that we already have in place. And also, we are requesting to extend the interlocal agreement that we have with the city of Oklahoma City to administer the housing rehab program for us. Currently, the city, city of Moore will handle all the administrative aspects of it, and then once they become an eligible or qualified applicant, at that point, we turn the application over to the city of Oklahoma City, and they handle the construction aspect of it. Their program is extremely robust and set up for this kind of activity, and so this interlocal agreement's been in place for a year. We're requesting you to consider another year extension on this. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Second. Thank you. Thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item?
Just for clarity, are we talking about item four alone here, or does he talk about item five, I think also?
He did talk about item five. We need to vote on item four, and it was the first part of what he talked about.
Kate, would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number five is consider approval of an interlocal agreement with the city of Oklahoma City regarding the housing rehabilitation program using CBVGR DR funds and, we already talked about it, so do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you. Second. Thank you, thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote on that item?
Thank you.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number six is consider approval of a purchase agreement for the land acquisition of Royal Rock, excuse me, Business Development LLC, Royal Park, Moore Incorporated, located in the southeast quarter of Section 22, Township 10 North, Range 3 West, Moore, Cleveland County, Oklahoma, using CBVGR-DR funds in the amount of $3,246,031.
Mayor, this is the formal approval of the purchase contract for the 14.4-something acres of land in the former Royal Park, Cobahom Park area, for the proposed redevelopment project. We needed a formal public vote, so it's the issue that you've seen several times in executive sessions.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you. Second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Would anyone like to address on this issue? Would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number seven is consider ordinance number 79315 amending Part 7, Chapter 1, Section 7-106, authorize signature on checks and warrants by deleting certain positions and adding the city manager providing for the severability and providing for repealer.
Mayor, we'd like to ask for you all to table this tonight.
Yeah.
With the unfortunate situation with Mr. Corbett, we just need to kind of regroup with that in terms of it's essentially a housekeeping measure to bring our city ordinance into compliance with what's actually been happening in practice for some time with regard to authorize signatures on various accounts. Make a motion to table items, though.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion to table. Would you call for the vote, please?
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item is tabled. Item number eight is consider ordinances number 79415 amending Part 6, Chapter 1, Section 6-121 establishing a fee for the continuance of any matter before the municipal court to be added to the court cost, providing for severability and providing for repealer.
Mayor and council, this item and the following item, based upon the budget approval that the council did several weeks ago, it was also necessary to update our ordinances in relation to the court costs that are charged on each citation or each ordinance. Those two items reflect those changes that are necessary to implement the budget that was approved.
Move to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. How much is the continuous on a ticket?
$15.
$15? Okay, just curious. Anybody else have any questions or comments? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number nine is consider ordinance number 79515 amending- Item number nine is consider ordinance number seven nine five one five amending part six, chapter one, section six dash one twenty-seven, payment of cost by defendant by establishing a technology fee, continuous fee, and expungent order filing fee, providing for the severability and providing for the repealer.
Move to approve.
All right, thank you. Thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions on this item? Not, would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number ten is consider adopting resolution number eight twenty-five one five amending the city of Moore's schedule of fees and charges.
Mayor, this item deals with the utility rate structure that was approved in the budget, and so there are several pages to it, but it's the utility rate adjustments that were approved as a part of the budget.
Okay.
Move to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on these items? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number eleven is considering a deemed appropriate accept nominations and elect a vice mayor. This was put on here, it's been a couple of years since we changed that, and I don't know... Do you want to still be the vice mayor?
Sure. The pay is great.
Do I?
The pay is great.
Yeah, I was going to say, it gets the same as mine, it's nothing.
I'll feel free that one time of the year when you're not here.
Oh, yeah, okay. I try not to miss too many. Anybody want to make a motion?
I make a motion. Robert Kraus remains vice mayor.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
All right, would you call for the... Is there any other discussion? Anybody else want to do it? All right, would you call for the...
Congratulations.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, we just put that on there so we could have a party. Item number twelve is considered deemed appropriate accept nominations and elect a member and an alternate to serve on the ACOG Board of Directors, Intermodal Transportation Policy Committee, Garber Wellington Policy Committee, and the nine-one-one Association Board of Directors. That's you, Mark, right?
Yeah, I've had to come in and down for a couple of years and like to continue serving.
Okay, there's a big learning curve on that one because you have so many boards.
I think, aren't you... Did you say you're the secretary of the...
Yes.
Okay. I think you've done a great job, I...
Yeah, we haven't heard from him, so he's doing...
Yeah, good job.
Yeah, good job.
I'm not very...
Thanks.
I make a motion. I keep Mark Ham on as a representative for these boards. Second.
And I would ask that ACOG, we have alternates, and it's important that the monthly meet once a month, that we have a forum under a few instances where we have them. So I would like to recommend that we consider maybe two council people, so that last time I may have missed one, maybe many to... I tried to be there at all most of the time, so it's important that we are there so that they have a forum and that they can conduct business and vote, pay bills, do the things that they need to do. So if we have two alternates, I think we could help with that.
You get to pick, I guess.
Well, I...
Whoever wants to do it.
Volunteers that they meet the Thursday, last Thursday of the month.
I thought Terry Cavanagh said he wanted to.
Is that what you heard? He's not here, is that a motion?
As you can see, he's not here, so we...
Which is why he is...
Yeah, you actually have to have somebody show up for that job.
I'll do it, Mark.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Now, Steve, Mr. Edie, what do you want to say?
Well, I'm just going to... Jason is the current...
Jason Blair is...
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Okay, one and two. It'll be primary, I'll be secondary.
Okay, we have a motion, a second.
You don't get to pick if you're secondary.
Could you make a second motion?
I'll say it.
Okay.
Mark made a motion that it would make a second.
Is that going to include Jason and Melissa?
That's the alternates.
Okay.
Yes, I amend my motion to reflect that.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Congratulations, God. At this time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item number thirteen is a consent docket. Item A is receive and approve amendments of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held June fifteenth, two thousand fifteen. Item B, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen in the amount of seven hundred forty-six thousand, two hundred five dollars, twenty-two cents.
Move to approve. Second.
Thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number fourteen is consider adjustment to the operating transfers and a residual equity transfer for the Moore Public Works Authority.
Mayor, the item as presented, and that was in the agenda, was for the approval to not make the last monthly operating transfer from MPWA to the risk management and to the general fund, one hundred and forty-five thousand and two hundred and eight thousand, respectively. We would request that you approve those tonight. The additional residual equity transfer of two hundred and fifty thousand, we would ask that not to be a part of the motion this evening. We need to do a little bit more work on that again with our situation as far as in finance until we get a clear picture on that. But the other two, we would ask for you to approve just to work a little bit towards improving the financial position of the MPWA. So just the adjustment to the two operating transfers.
Okay. The motion to approve that adjustment and the transfers.
I'm second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number fifteen is consider, and if deemed appropriate, accept nominations and elect a vice chair of the trust. Who's that? Is that you, Robert? Okay. You still want to do that, too?
That's my current job.
Yeah, okay. Anybody want to make a motion?
Make a motion that Robert remains the vice chair.
Okay.
Second.
All right, thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number sixteen is considering deemed appropriate accept nominations and elect a secretary of the trust.
David Roberts is currently that one.
Anybody want to make a motion to reelect David?
Would you like to stay on David Roberts?
I would.
I wasn't even asking him. Just make a motion.
Make a motion to nominate David Roberts. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item number seventeen is a consent docket. Item A is accept the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held June fifteenth, two thousand fifteen. Item B, approve payment of workers' compensation, excuse me, compromise settlements in the amount of twenty-one thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars to Justin Weaver for CBR claim number two zero five zero 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 two five seven and eleven thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars to Justin Weaver for CBR claim number zero two two zero five zero 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 one five six. Authorized placements on the aggregate tax rolls and supplement the budget accordingly. Item C is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen in the amount of four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars, fifty-two cents.
Move to approve.
All right, thank you. Thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item eighteen is considering a deemed appropriate accept nominations and elect a vice chair of the Moore Risk Management Board. Who's the vice chair now?
Robert Kraus.
Well, I would have some action to nominate Melissa.
Oh, man, you were dissed, okay.
I second that.
Oh, not Robert, you. I'm kidding. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Okay, would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number nineteen is considering a deemed appropriate accept nominations and elect a secretary of the Moore Risk Management Board.
I'll make a motion for Terry Cavanagh to have this position. Second.
Okay. Would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we will recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and convene the city councilman. Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Item number twenty is new business, citizens item for... Items not on the agenda is item A. We have a couple of signs up. Rodney Mears? No, I'm sorry.
Hanes?
Acres.
John Hanes?
What? There's people signed up.
Oh.
Rodney Acres? Yeah.
That's my neighbor out there, he's here for the same thing.
Okay.
You want to talk?
Are you guys fighting?
No. I live at three oh one South Silverleaf Drive, over here, it's east of eastern. We're having a flooding problem that's coming out of that field after they built that Church of Christ church. They built a dike up there on the east side of the church, and when that dike gets full, it comes rushing in my yard. My yard's nothing but mud now. It's been that way since May, and it does his property the same way, and we can't get no help, and it just keeps getting worse. And I can't even go out in my backyard and enjoy my backyard because of all the mud that's coming in out of that field. Our patio has constantly got mud on it. You know, who's going to help me?
Can you take a look at that and see if we can put a retaining pond back there or something?
Stan has looked at it, we've looked at it. Go ahead, Stan.
I've entered this gentleman's home, and he's correct, there is a problem, and it developed after that central church of Christ relocated over there, south of the high school. And what they did, they built a dike along the east boundary of this church property. However, they didn't extend it far enough back to the south, and with these spring rains we've experienced, what it did is stacked up before it left the property and went around the dike and through this gentleman's backyard and probably the neighbors I haven't seen or you right south.
I have trenches dug around my house to try to divert the water.
I've talked to the church, and there, working with us, our engineer has been out there, we have a plan in place to fix the problem, and the long-term solution, I'm busy to don big today, we'll extend that dike and make a permanent type dike that can be mowed and managed and maintained, and then we'll build a concrete flume along the east boundary of the church property, which will be west of the dike from one end to the other, cut the curve, and then we're going to have to add some additional storm sur we be in the city.
Most they made all the storm drainage on the east side, I mean, on the west side of church and in front of the church, but they've done nothing to the backside of churches, you know, where our properties are located at.
That's correct.
You know, it's coming out of that field.
That's correct.
So, you know, if they can eliminate that problem up there to direct the water, you know, someplace else, why can't it be done on our property? On the east side to protect our property?
I wasn't involved in the perve, but what makes sense to me is that was temporary, that was a temporary solution because they were planning... They're getting ready to start their second phase, they're going to build a family life center over on that east section, and I think that was just a temporary fix until they got this family life center under construction. I don't know that to be true, but that's the only thing that makes sense to me because you're right, the storm sur is on the other part of the property, but I think that's the reason why I'm asking.
Well, see, when they built the church, they brought dirt in there, they didn't need to bring no more dirt in there. That property is higher than our property anyway, and they brought more dirt in there to build a church, and now it's even higher, and everything comes our way.
Sounds like there's a plan to fix it, though. Stan, do you have any idea when they're going to get on this?
That's what I'm going to do.
Well, it's going to stop raining. And I keep getting further behind. Like I said, I spoke to our engineer today, and he has been looking at not only your drainage problem, we have some more right east in that same basin, and I got some proposals for some repairs to be made and some corrections in that entire area from eastern over to drainage problem, we have some more right eastern in that same basin, and I got some proposals for some repairs to be made and some corrections in that entire area from eastern over to Ramblin Oaks Boulevard.
Is there a time limit? I mean, when?
Well, as soon as I can get approvals and get the funding, I mean, I've got to find the funding source. We're talking substantial approvals.
I understand.
Talking about quality of storage.
But see, we can't even enjoy our backyard or nothing, can't even go out on the patio because it's mud all the time. You know, every time we get this three or four inches of rain, here it comes again.
So the people east of you have actually had water in their homes, so it's a problem in that entire.
And it runs down across his driveway, right down the side, well, across our patio, then down the south side of our house, and across his driveway. It worked out half of my front yard, you know, about four years ago, it just took the dirt and the grass and everything, so I had to go get, you know, stuff and re.
With the manager's direction, I can prepare a cost estimate for the next meeting and have council approve the expenditure, because it's going to be a substantial amount of money.
Well, we have not only this situation, but four or five around town that are, that have come to our attention because of these rains that we've not experienced before, so.
Well, we had this problem before till they built the church, and then they, then they made it higher, and then they put that dike up where everybody on Silverleaf was getting their fair share of the, of the drainage, but now, since they put the dike up, once the dike gets full, guess where it comes? Because I'm right on the south end of the dike.
Yes, and like I said, we're certainly aware of it, and we're going to make it right and fix it. As to exactly when, we can't say for sure, but as soon as we can.
Whatever you do, don't get them guys to build our road, because they're going to fix it for care.
You're preaching to the choir there. You really are.
You seem to have to train them to can't do it.
Yeah.
That's hard to do.
Over.
Yes. That's Robertson, Robertson's in charge of that project, right? Man, we, we definitely, I think, all agree on that one, just like we need to fix that too. So that is just none. Okay, where are we? There's no one else signed up to speak, would anyone like to? Okay, items from the city council or trustees?
I just have one thing. Most you know, I got married two weeks ago, and this weekend, we were going through, doing our thank you cards, and I was almost in the process of writing a thank you card for Jim Corbett, when I received an email from Mr. Edie, and I received one of the most thoughtful gifts from anybody from, from Mr. Corbett, and that's the way he has always been. I've known Mr. Corbett since the mid to late nineties, as well as the mayor. I joined the council shortly after him, and it's one thing I always knew about Jim Corbett is he was always the nicest, most considerate, polite man I've ever met, and it was absolute pleasure, and I've never met a finer individual, and he would be greatly missed, and I just wanted to share that with everybody that, you know, it's, he had not, didn't know each other outside of city politics, but he, he gave my wife and I one of the most considerate gifts that we received, and that's a testament to who he is, so I just had to share that with you guys.
I've also just had, a few years I've gone to council, and every time I had questions about the budget process and city finances, he was always there to take the call or stop by and visit with him and answer those questions. Generally, they were questions that I'd asked two or three times before, but he was patient and answered them again till I felt good about what we were doing, whatever we were doing, and really appreciate him and his service. When things like that happen, it just really puts things into perspective of what's important and what's not important. So I'm grateful that I got to know him a little bit, and I know he will be missed by now.
Okay. Any items from the city or trust manager?
Just a couple, yes, Mayor. Just also echo what you've said this evening about Jim. It was an utter shock to all of us on Saturday, whenever we found out about this, and it hit our, our family of employees really very hard. And he was a fine man and an excellent finance director. Never had to worry about the money or the finances, although we always accused him of squirreling away some money here or there, but in fact, he didn't do that. But he will be missed, and it's going to be huge shoes for us to fill. Cheryl McConnell, our assistant finance director, in the meanwhile, is going to work towards filling Jim's shoes for a while. We'll also, you, you all know that we have a, an existing contract with Crawford and Associates just to do some miscellaneous accounting work and that sort of thing. We've visited with them, and they're willing to help additionally as need be, and we will begin immediately recruiting for that position, and it's, it's difficult to talk about that whenever, we haven't even had the funeral yet, which, by the way, is, is Friday at eleven o'clock at the South Point Church, which is at one hundred and thirty-fourth and I-44, but we will begin doing that immediately. And on to a better thing, just thank you to all of our employees and all the departments, virtually all the departments were involved somehow with our July fourth event. It was an outstanding day, really, I think, well-received by the public, fireworks show, albeit with a little bit of a glitch, was impressive, was fabulous, and I thought it was, the finale was the best we've ever seen, so.
I received several text messages from friends with thumbs up after the fireworks, so.
It was pretty cool.
Yeah.
So hopefully bigger and better next year, but thanks to all the departments that were involved with that. It took an army of our employees to put that together, so.
Good job. Okay. And item twenty-one, which is executive session. Section three oh seven, title twenty-five, Oklahoma statutes permits the public body to meet in executive session to, excuse me, for certain specified reasons under certain specified conditions. It is the opinion of the city attorney that the city council may consider and adopt a motion to meet in executive session to discuss the following items. Item A, consider approval of fiscal year two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen contract between the City of Moore and the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge number one thirty-one as authorized by twenty-five Oklahoma statutes three oh seven B dash two. Item B is discuss and consider taking action concerning city manager's evaluation and employment benefits as authorized by twenty-five Oklahoma statutes three oh seven B dash one. Do we have a motion to convene to executive session?
Make a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Would you call for the vote, please?
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, we are convened to executive session. Thank you for coming.
Melissa Hunt.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here. On item A, consider approval of fiscal year two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen